Madam Clerk, the time is 6:45 PM. I call to order the special closed session of the Emeryville City Council. This meeting is being conducted in person at 1333 Park Avenue here in Emeryville, California. The City Council welcomes comments, including criticisms, and I don't have them memorized, about the policies, procedures, programs, or services of the city or of the acts or missions of the City Council. Speakers shall not use threatening profane or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a City Council, successor agency, management of Emeryville Service Authority, or related meeting. The City is committed to maintaining a workplace free of unlawful harassment and is mindful that city staff regularly attend council meetings. Discriminatory statements or conduct that would potentially violate the Fair Employment and Housing Act such as statements or conduct that is hostile, intimidating, oppressive, or abusive is per se disruptive to a meeting and shall not be tolerated. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Councilmember Bouders.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Present.
And Mayor Welch.
Here. Item three is ex parte communications. Members, do any of you have any ex parte communications to report for this agenda? Seeing and hearing none. Item four is public comment on closed session items. Any member of the public wishing to make a comment on closed session items can do so now for two minutes. Seeing no members of the public here with us in the chambers, Madam Clerk, I will now close public comment, and we will adjourn to closed session. We will take item 5.1 in closed session, and the time is 6:46 PM. We are adjourned to closed session.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped. At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:51 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
At 6:50 PM, we have returned from closed session. Mr. Kenny, do you remind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you very much, Mayor Welch. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Bouders, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, or Vice Mayor Mora, excuse me, the City Council approved a settlement of item 5.1, the claim of Michael Miranda against the city of Emeryville for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $9,107.23 by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak here. Good evening, honorable council members. My name is Beth Esperanz Rosales, and I've been an Emeryville resident for a bit over eight years now. I'm on the steering committee of the Avalon Tenants Advocates, and I also serve on the city's Commission on Aging. I'm here today on behalf of the Avalon Tenants Advocates, who really wanted to be here, but seven o'clock is a little bit dark for many of the seniors in our building. So here I am, and I'd like to thank Councilmember John Bouders for what he has done for us over the years at the Avalon Senior Housing, a low-income senior housing complex owned by Ebalsi, the East Bay Asian Local Development Corporation. You've supported us in many occasions. A few examples are your robust support for the creation of a crosswalk completely flashing LED lights on mid-block San Pablo Avenue near Forty-Fifth Street so that the elderly and the general public can cross San Pablo Avenue safely without getting hit by rising cars often driving around 50 to 55 miles an hour on a 35 mile zone. You also supported the small businesses on the first floor of our building by providing safety for their customers who often park across the street at Pack and Save. You attended our residents' meetings a number of times after our building was robbed twice during the past two holiday seasons, bringing along former city manager Paul Budenhagen and chief police, chief of police Jeff Jennings to affirm the city's attention to the triangle neighborhood, the southernmost tip, the densest and poorest side of our city. So your dedication to public safety of Emeryville residents.
Thank you for your comment.
Especially pedestrians have been tremendous. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wishing to make a comment can do so now for two minutes.
Hi, my name is Vicky Sewell. I have lived here for 40 years, and the first time I met John Bowder was at Big Daddy's Community Garden when he was campaigning, and he volunteered to clean a horrendously horrible spot in the garden, and he stayed there for two hours digging weeds even when I told him it wasn't necessary. So he wouldn't give up till he had cleaned the whole job. I couldn't get over it. But anyway, the second time I met him was on the housing committee, and he really made that committee work. We got a lot of affordable housing in Emeryville during that time period. And lastly, for about the last five years, he's helped tirelessly for ECAP, the Emeryville Citizens Assistance Program. He's got us a new home, which will be great, but he got us a new truck, and he raised at least $150,000 for us. So he's meant a lot to the people, as you mentioned, on the poor, on the west side of Emeryville. You've helped us a lot. Thanks a lot. We're a lot happier and safer while you were on the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other member of the public wishing to make comment can do so now for two minutes.
Yeah, John, I want to thank you too for serving the city for so long. I have a different kind of mess that you cleaned up here. This is a big, long email exchange from 2022 when a diesel generator was planted about, you know, 500 feet from Emory, the ECCL. And, you know, it's just this long email chain of you talking to all these different bureaucrats, you know, asking for meetings, trying to find out how this thing was, you know, why it was there, how long it was going to be there. It's the kind of stuff that I just don't have time for, and I think most people don't have time to, like, you know, dig through the, you know, talk to everyone, you know, set up the meetings, and handle things like this that affect our city. So I'm really thankful.
A few examples are your robust support for the creation of a crosswalk completely flashing LED lights on mid-block San Pablo Avenue near 40th Street so that the elderly and the general public can cross San Pablo Avenue safely without getting hit by rising cars, often driving around 50 to 55 miles an hour on a 35 mile zone. You also supported the small businesses on the first floor of our building by providing safety for their customers, who often park across the street at Pack and Save. You attended our residents' meetings a number of times after our building was robbed twice during the past two holiday seasons, bringing along former city manager Paul Budenhagen and chief of police Jeff Jennings to affirm the city's attention to the triangle neighborhood, the southernmost tip, the densest and poorest side of our city. So your dedication to public safety of Emeryville residents,
Thank you for your comment.
especially pedestrians, have been tremendous. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wishing to make a comment can do so now for two minutes.
Hi, my name is Vicky Sewell. I have lived here for 40 years. And the first time I met John Bouders was at Big Daddy's Community Garden when he was campaigning. And he volunteered to clean a horrendously horrible spot in the garden. And he stayed there for two hours digging weeds, even when I told him it wasn't necessary. So he wouldn't give up till he had cleaned the whole job. I couldn't get over it. But anyway, the second time I met him was on the housing committee, and he really made that committee work. We got a lot of affordable housing in Emeryville during that time period. And lastly, for about the last five years, he's helped tirelessly for ECAP, the Emeryville Citizens Assistance Program. He's got us a new home, which will be great, but he got us a new truck. And he raised at least $150,000 for us. So he's meant a lot to the people, as you mentioned, on the poor, on the west side of Emeryville. You've helped us a lot. Thanks a lot. We're a lot happier and safer while you were on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other member of the public wishing to make comment can do so now for two minutes.
Yeah, John, I want to thank you too for serving the city for so long. I have a different kind of mess that you cleaned up here. This is a big, long email exchange from 2022 when a diesel generator was planted about, you know, 500 feet from Emery, the ECCL. And, you know, it's just this long email chain of you talking to all these different bureaucrats, you know, asking for meetings, trying to find out how this thing was, you know, why it was there, how long it was going to be there. It's the kind of stuff that I just don't have time for. And I think most people don't have time to, like, you know, dig through the, you know, talk to everyone, you know, set up the meetings, and handle things like this that affect our city. So I'm really thankful. You're one of those people that actually gets things done, and so I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you for your comment. Any other member of the public wishing to make comment can do so now for two minutes. Going once, going twice. Public comment is now closed. Item 10 is the consent agenda. Members, please review the consent agenda. If anyone would like to pull an item off the consent agenda, you can do so now. If not, we have a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. The roll, please.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
I actually raised my hand to pull an item out of the consent calendar. My hand was up the entire time.
Member Pryforce, which item would you like to pull for discussion?
10.6. I'd like to pull that item out for discussion. But in the interest of time, I'd be interested in moving this item for discussion at our next council meeting.
If you're going to pull it from the consent agenda at this moment, we would need to discuss it now.
I can provide comments now, but I would like to, I prefer to, I mean, we could have a discussion now, but for the interest of time, since it looks like it might be a long evening, we can move it to the next agenda.
Madam Mayor, I just conferred with staff, and that item is actually time-sensitive. I did have a conversation with council member Pryforce earlier today. But that item is time-sensitive, so if it pleases the council, you can ask us questions of staff, and we can try to respond to those questions.
We can move with the rest of the items, and then we can return back. Is that, are you agreeable to that, council member?
I, yeah. I made the motion. I'll make a motion to approve all items on the consent excluding 10.6.
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye.
I'll now take item 10.6, resolution of the city council, the city of Emeryville approving the annual department impact fee report for fiscal year 2023 to 2024. Do we have staff? Any staff comments on the item? Mr. Smalley?
I don't think we have any comments. We're happy to field any questions you may have on this report. This is for the approval of the report. It was previously provided on a previous agenda as a public information item.
Thank you. Member Pryforce, do you have questions for staff?
Yes, please. Thank you. So 10.6 specifically deals with our impact fees. And so, given that the city is not in a good shape financially, that is my statement. That is not a statement from the city. That is my perception, my view, given our budget shortfall, our home values, our vacancy rates, as well as, you know, a lot of other issues. I just don't want anything related to revenue generation or income that the city has to not be placed before the people. And so, in terms of the impact fees, could you give some information around the, when, because I read the staff report of each impact fee, what they are. For all of you who don't read these reports, they're all available online. But for those who are just watching, what each impact fee is, and what's been the timeline, so specifically what's been the timeline in terms of when they were, when were they created, and what's been the updates for each of those impact fees? And, yeah, that's it. The numbers, we can skip the numbers.
Okay. I'll defer to Planning Manager Migru Desai.
Good evening, council members. Just to answer your question, currently, we have three impact fees: the traffic, the parks and wrecks, and affordable housing. The traffic impact fee has been instituted in the city since 1990. The other two impact fees, the parks and affordable housing, was in 2014. And then there was, and during that time, all three fees were updated in terms of NEXA studies. So just to understand, in terms of what these impact fees are, they are essentially ways to mitigate impacts of developments, private developments, on traffic facilities. The fact that we have more businesses, we have more residents, that also creates the need for more parks. So that's where the park impact fees come in, and also the same thing for the housing. So that's the reason for the collection of impact fees. This is allowed by state law, and the report that is in front of you is required by state law as well. It is basically telling the citizens, as well as those who contribute and the developers, how much fees have been collected each year and how were they used. As Mr. Smalley mentioned, this report was first published at a previous, it was last month. And by law, we are required that this report be available to public for 15 days, and it's a lot more than 15 days, almost two months. And that's basically it. If there's any precise questions you had, then I would be happy to answer.
So for the public's understanding, the impact fee, you mentioned two were 2014, and one was as far back as 1990?
Correct.
Yeah. And so when we say that they have been updated every year as required, so the question, the two questions I have, one is, when we say update, does that mean that there has been any adjustments?
Correct.
And also, what were those adjustments or variations through the years? I mean, I guess percentage-wise, or how we make those determinations?
Right. So each year in April, and we did that this year as well, we adjusted for the inflation, and there's a methodology that we've been using since 2014. So this year's was 0.63% increase. I do not have the other numbers in front of me, but I think they were a little bit higher in the previous years.
I have one last question. So the fees were adjusted based on inflation. Does the city, city council or planning commission have the ability to adjust those fees outside of inflation, meaning that do we have any discretion as to how those fees can vary?
We would need to do a NEXA study. We would need to update our NEXA study that was done in 2014. And it is being scheduled. It's coming up in terms of its time. So you probably will be seeing it in the coming year or so, a request to do that.
I just want to say thank you for answering those questions. And I just wanted to make it clear to Emeryville public that this will be explored through a study session made by the staff. So I just want to say thank you.
Of course.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye.
Item 11 is public hearings. We have 11.1, the resolution of the city council, the city of Emeryville, granting a waiver from noise ordinance for sewer rehabilitation work on the sanitary sewer in Scepter Line owned by East Bay Municipal Utility District for a period of eight weeks on dates to be determined by East Bay Municipal Utility District and its contractor. Members, are you agreeable for us to waive staff presentation on this item?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Moving forward, we'll go on to open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:23 PM. I am now opening this public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to make comment on the public hearing can do so now for two minutes. Go your way to the podium.
Well, the city has a long, sort of sorry, history in granting waivers for developers, especially developers and public utilities that want to violate our reasonable expectation for peace and quiet in our city. And I chronicled that for about 10 years, and I found that it's virtually 100% of the time when, especially a developer asks for a waiver, the city council will grant it. So you've used up all your public good faith because now maybe this is a proper time to grant it, but you're going to grant it here in a few moments. But we will never know because you've used up all the good faith. And so, you know, everything comes with a cost. And now I am taking a video of the four of you who are not meeting my eyes. The ethics, the code of ethics says you're supposed to be active listening and looking at me when I speak. Each public member that comes up here to speak, you're supposed to be looking at, so says the code of ethics that you signed, Mayor Welch. You signed it, and yet here you are. I'll zoom in on you. You're violating it. You're not actively listening to me right now, and that's a violation of the code of ethics.
Thank you for your comment. Any member of the public wishing to comment for the public hearing can do so now for two minutes. Seeing and hearing none. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:25 PM. This public hearing is now closed. Members, I return to you all for deliberation or a motion.
I move approval of the resolution.
I will second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion. Second, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye. There are no action items. Department had reports.
None this evening?
Thank you. Item 14, future agenda item request from council members. Seeing and hearing none. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:26 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Madam Clerk, the time is still 7:26 PM. I call to order. The city of Emeryville is successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. We are still in the same place, and all members are still present. With that being said, item three is approval of the final agenda. Members, do we have a motion on the final agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion. Second, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. Members, do any of you have any ex parte communications to report for this agenda?
Seeing and hearing none. Item five is public comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda. Any member of the public wishing to comment on the consent agenda or items on any agenda can do so now for two minutes. Come on down.
In case we're not allowed to speak late in a few moments about Mr. Bouders, in case we're not allowed to, let me say the following. John Bouders has been, he's not meeting my eyes, he's not engaging active listening, and neither are any of the other council members except for Councilmember Pryforce. Councilmember Bouders has been on our city council for eight years, and during that time, he said no to the minimum wage ordinance. He rolled our minimum wage ordinance back, lowering the wage of the poorest working people among us. He said no to rent stabilization. He's speaking now. Not only is he not looking at me, he's speaking to the mayor. No to rent control and rent stabilization, said Mr. Bouders. No to local governance of our housing policy and yes to corporate control of our housing policy through real estate investment trust corporations. No to an ethics commission, he said. He said no to a balanced budget, and now we can see we have $1.8 million deficit. He's been on the budget and governance committee for eight years. No to parks. He specifically said no to parks, not until we get enough housing, and he wouldn't tell us how much that would be. Yes to the ANI project with the 700-foot tower that the developer pulled out of. But in that yes, he said no to our tower separation ordinance and no to our unit mix family-friendly ordinance. No to the unit mix ordinance, he said. We've got to redo that. He said no to a Gaza ceasefire right after he said yes to a support Ukraine ceasefire, I mean, resolution. And he said no to a mayoral rotation because he wanted to take a second shot at it because he was such a wonder of kind with finances. And so that's why Councilmember Donohue had to get skipped because Mr. Bouders, he said, was such a great technician with finances. But where did that leave us? $1.8 million in the hole.
Thank you for your comment. Any member of the public that wishes to make a comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda can do so now for two minutes. All right, seeing and hearing none. Madam Clerk, public comment is now closed. Item six is the consent agenda. Members, do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Mayor Welch?
Aye. There are no action items. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:30. This meeting is adjourned. Madam Clerk, the time is still 7:30, and I would like to call to order the meeting of the Emeryville City Council. We are still in the same place, and all members are still present. Item three is approval of the final agenda. Members, do we have a motion on the final agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. Members, do any of you have any ex parte communications to report for this agenda? Seeing and hearing none. Item five is special orders of the day, and I just have one special order of the day, which is the proclamation of the city council, the city of Emeryville, and recognition of the contributions made by John Bouders during his term on the Emeryville City Council. Whereas on June 16, 2015, the city council appointed John Bouders to the Emeryville Planning Commission. And whereas during John's term on the planning commission, he had an active role in deliberations on a number of major development projects that were approved, including marketplace sites and the Anton of the Nady site residential project. And whereas John was elected to the city council November 2016 and had to resign from the planning commission. And whereas on December 8, 2016, the planning commission presented John with a foretelling resolution stating John has consistently demonstrated an abiding dedication to the well-being of the Emeryville community with his insightful intelligence and his big heart, resulting in a record of thoughtful and principled votes during his tenure as a planning commissioner. His keen eye and strong instincts for the truth and his bow ties have provided the commission with a well-groomed perspective for decisions that are fair, progressive, and productive. We anticipate that he will bring these same qualities to the city council and so expand the city's horizon for success. And whereas John provided outstanding leadership and guidance over the past eight years on the city council, becoming a key figure in the community, and whereas John has made several contributions to improving the quality of life for all Bay Area residents by serving on regional boards, including eight years on the Alameda County Transportation Commission, where he championed the county's first-ever ratio and equity action plan and the creation of the Countywide Bike Waste Plan, six years on the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, where he successfully championed the adoption of Rule 6-5, one of the most stringent refinery emissions reduction standards in the nation, and eight years on the Alameda County Healthy Homes JPA, where he presided as board chair his entire tenure. And whereas John chaired the budget and governance committee for eight years and served on other council committees, including Transportation Committee, Public Safety Committee, and Sustainability Committee. And whereas John's relentless work on ballot measures for the city council included introducing and championing Measure C in 2018, the $50 million affordable housing bond, and Measure O in 2022, the equitable real property. O in 2022, the equitable real property transfer tax that funds critical city services and infrastructure and maintenance, and where John has received council support to re-envision 4300 San Pablo Affordable Housing Project as an intergenerational project that houses foster youth aging out of foster care and services alongside fixed and low-income seniors. He also spearheaded SB 591 in 2021 to change state law on low-income housing tax credits to make financing intergenerational housing projects legal. And whereas John worked consistently to protect the environment, including introducing the lead safety ordinance in 2017, the smoking pollution control ordinance in 2018, the bird safe design guidelines in 2019, the pollinator protection ordinance in 2024, and the urban tree planting and wildfire programs in 2024, as well as other amendments to planning regulations that significantly reduce auto-centric uses and put limits on noise pollution. And whereas John is nationally recognized as America's bike mayor and named as one of the 50 most influential Americans on cycling in 2023, and whereas John introduced the 40th Street Multimodal Safety Project to turn 40th and Shamont Streets into complete streets, but their vision for citywide mobility, choice, and safety, and negotiated the inclusion of diverters, curb height bike lanes, and other traffic calming investments with private sector partners on bicycle priority routes, including the Emery Yards Project, Emery Station Overland, and Public Market in Emeryville, and whereas John played a pivotal role in establishing the Sherwin Avenue Community Grind, a project that fosters community spirit and sustainability, and helped rehabilitate or add numerous other park and open space projects, including Pella Dew Park, Christie Park, June Park, Emery Point, and the Devon Park Playground, and whereas John has worked tirelessly on behalf of residents of Emeryville on practical effective quality of life improvements, including simple bus stop seating and the Quiet Zone Train Crossing Initiative. We can all sleep better at night knowing he is out there looking out for us, and also thanks to those who silenced the train horns. Whereas John, who may physically be allergic to cars, has forever changed the streetscape of the city by advocating for safe and abundant bike and pedestrian pathways, making Emeryville an award-winning model for livability regionally and nationally, and whereas John treats all staff members with respect and dignity, ensuring that everyone, from part-time staff to full-time and residents alike, feel valued and included. And whereas John's two dogs, Raina and Sir Nugget, will forever be welcome at City Hall for treats, pets, and love, and John can come too. And whereas, through his efforts and many hours involved in community engagement events like Earth Day, annual shoreline cleanup events, annual back-to-school drive at EUSD, or attending at the annual Emeryville Celebration of Arts, a willing donkey at the Harvest Festival Dunk Tank, and many other events for organizations too numerous to list here, John has significantly contributed to making Emeryville the community a better place for all. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the city council of the city of Emeryville that John Bouders is honored and appreciated for his many contributions during his service as a council member of the city of Emeryville, proclaimed by the mayor of the city council of the city of Emeryville at a regular meeting held Tuesday, December 10, 2024. Congratulations. If you weren't here before, I would like to invite members of the public to make comments to our departing council member if they feel so motivated to. Yes, please, for two minutes, Madam Clerk. This is for you.
Well, I timed this for three minutes, so I'm going to have to talk real fast and cut out a bunch of what I was going to say. Good evening, Mayor Welch and members of the city council. My name is Charlie Bryant. The last time I stood at this podium was about a year and a half ago, when I was here to receive a proclamation from then-Mayor John Bouders on the occasion of my retirement from the city of Emeryville for 23 years as your planning director. So now it's a little role reversal tonight, where I'm here to join you in honoring Councilmember Bouders on the occasion of his retirement from the city council. I first became aware of John Bouders when I walked into the Assistant City Attorney's Office, Michael Geena, about 10 years ago, and saw this big dog lying on the floor. And I said, what is this dog, Michael? Are we allowed to bring our pets to work now? And he said, no, no, I'm just babysitting for a friend of mine, a lawyer named John Bouders. You'll probably hear more about him in the future. And sure enough, he ran for city council in 2014, and as you know, he lost that election by less than 200 votes. But then he went on, he was appointed to the planning commission, and then he went on to get elected to the council in 2016, getting more votes than any other candidate. Recently, he unfortunately lost his bid to be a county supervisor, and that margin was 425 votes out of over 140,000 cast, which was less than 3/10 of 1%. Very disappointing. Unfortunately, a miss is as good as a mile. So I'm sure John will be back on his feet and doing some other kind of public service very soon. It was my pleasure to serve as staff to both the planning commission and the council during John's tenure on both. I did get to read his resolution, as I'm sure he remembers, at the planning commission, so I can feel for you, Mayor Welch, in what you just had to go through, because I had to go through the same thing about eight years ago. But I just want to wish you all the best of luck in your future endeavors, John. I'm sure they will be wonderful, and we all look forward to finding out what's next for you. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to comment?
I can't resist. I'm Fran Quittel. I serve on the Budget Advisory Committee, and I want to attest to the prodigious memory that John Bouders has for every committee meeting and every packet of information, and the fact that when you say something at a meeting and John is there, you better know what you're talking about. So thank you for your diligent attention to the business of our city, and we certainly all wish you well.
Thank you, Fran. Any other members of the public or staff wishing to come and make comment can do so now.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Rebecca Sermano, Community Services Director. And we're just here to extend our deepest gratitude to John for everything you've done. She made me, Kristen started.
John, thank you so much for helping us protect Emeryville's youngest citizens. I just want to say thank you, your presence on this council and in the city, and the way you advocated for us helps us advocate for ourselves. So I want to say thank you.
Hello. Okay, so I'm going to say two things, because I'm really sappy. So, one, my time working at the city will be six years next month. I appreciate you building bridges instead of being divisive. I appreciate you listening and supporting people even though they might not agree with you. I appreciate you being a really great role model in public spaces. When I think about the youth I get to serve every day, I think that you are a really great example of a public servant, and I appreciate that you're always willing to support the things that we do. You show up, you're there, you're positive, we see you, and it's really great to have worked with you this whole time. And I think your legacy is really great, and I hope that I see you still.
Saturday morning.
Are those items that you would like to present to the council member?
Aye.
Thank you. Any other member of the public?
Oh, well, Charlie's going to beat you up there. Chad's going to beat you up there.
Thank you, Mayor. Chad Smalley, Community Development Director. Just want to say thank you for working with us for all these years. My entire tenure with Emeryville, you've been a leader during that time. I've been here about eight years. I appreciate the work you put in and the thoughtfulness, the strategic thinking, and of all those accolades and all of those different things that you've touched, you've really put a fingerprint on the city. But one that didn't get mentioned, that is just a small example, but it had huge impact, was the interceding that you did to help us close the Amtrak station property transfers. That transaction closed on the 25th of November, thanks to your intercedence in helping with breaking that loose, something we've been working on since 2018. So I want to say thank you personally for helping us get that done, because I was really tired of working on it. I wish you all the luck, and I can't wait to see what you do next. Thanks.
Thank you.
Public Works Director, Mohamed Aloy, City of Emeryville. I really want to express my appreciation to you for your clarity on your policy positions and your courage on those positions. It really has been energizing to work with those policy positions. And what's particularly noteworthy is your deep understanding of both the implicit and explicit mechanisms and resources needed to bring those policies to life. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, there's no other members of the public. Okay.
So we just heard a lot of propaganda about how great Mr. Bouders is. But first, I'd like to thank Councilmember Pryforce for doing all the work that you did to help stop Mr. Bouders, John Bouders, from becoming our county supervisor representative. I thank you for that. He did the people of Emeryville a great service, Mr. Pryforce did. Now, on to the truth. So the truth wasn't spoken here, it was propaganda. So again, Mr. Bouders, during his time on the council, said no to our minimum wage ordinance. He rolled it back, the minimum wage. No, it's true. I've got some coughing, but it's true. He said no to rent control and rent stabilization. He said no to local governance of our housing policy, and he said yes to corporate control of our housing policy. He said no to an ethics commission. He said no to a balanced budget, and he put us $1.8 million in the hole this year. He said no to parks. No new parks, not until we get enough housing, and he didn't tell us how much housing that is. He said yes to the Anni Tower, the Anni project, 700-foot tower, and the only reason why we didn't get it is because the developer decided not to do it, but the Anni Tower involved saying no to our tower separation ordinance and no to our family-friendly unit mix ordinance. Mr. Bouders led the drive to say no to cancel that. He said no to a Gaza ceasefire and yes to a Ukraine support resolution, and he said no to Emeryville's, the people of Emeryville's choice getting to be mayor. No more mayor rotation, so that the people's choice doesn't ever get to be mayor if he's unpopular with Mr. Bouders. So that's a terrible legacy. We didn't hear that from the resolution that the mayor just stated. All we heard was a bunch of pablum. So that's the truth.
Cool. Thanks for your comment.
Hi. Diane Martinez, good evening, council and community members. I timed this for three minutes, too, so I'm going to have to talk a little bit fast. Tonight, as we mark John Bouders' final city council meeting, I want to take a moment to honor and celebrate his exceptional contributions to Emeryville and our broader region. John is without a doubt the most effective and driven public servant I have ever met. His dedication goes far beyond the dais. He spends countless hours outside of public meetings collaborating with city staff, regional partners, and community members to make Emeryville and the Bay Area a better place. John has worked tirelessly, both locally and regionally, to elevate the voices of women of color, including my own. His efforts have amplified underrepresented perspectives and ensured they are woven into the fabric of our policies. He has been an invaluable thought partner in shaping critical policies around housing, homelessness, and tenant protections, issues that deeply affect our community. His impact is visible in our city's infrastructure. Thanks to John's leadership, Emeryville has seen measurable progress in expanding protected bikeways and enhancing pedestrian safety. John also got council on board with prioritizing and funding the completion of the South Brayfront Bridge. Plans for this bridge had been on the books for years, but they languished until his visionary leadership. John was also a key player in the community team that negotiated the benefits package and the development of what is now known as the Emery. His leadership helped envision and create a vibrant new neighborhood centered around Hoochin Park, offering both a community gathering space and a symbol of inclusiveness. Beyond Emeryville, John's leadership roles at ACTC and Back Mid have made a lasting regional impact. Through these roles, he steered millions of dollars to improve transit access and air quality for all Alameda County residents, as well as almost 8 million people represented by Back Mid. His vision and advocacy have left John a tangible legacy for both our city and the Bay Area. And I had more to say, but I just want to say I love you. You're one of my best friends, and we are all better for you being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Well, hi again. Lori Droste, former Berkeley City Council Member, Vice Mayor. April, you know, this is small potatoes, the public comment in Emeryville compared to Berkeley. It's the most I've ever spoken at a meeting, and I might just make this a habit. But you know, one thing I will say is you can gauge your effectiveness often by how well your staff loves you, right? You all set the policy. These are the very important people who implement the policy. And I was just texting now with our current city manager, Paul Budenhagen. He sends his regards and congratulates you for your service. And I was remiss in forgetting to say that current Mayor Adina Ishi, council members Rashi Kesarwani, former council member Susan Wengraff, council member Terry Taplin, council member Mark Humbert, sure, I'm forgetting some, but they all texted me right at this moment to say, please give my regards for your exemplary service. And then, just because I'm just your gadfly here at the Emeryville City Council meeting, I thought I would talk about some more of your commitments to the people of Emeryville. Emeryville has the highest minimum wage in the state. That is a huge accomplishment. Under your leadership, Emeryville paid sick leave requirements at 72 hours minimum for large businesses and 48 hours minimum for small businesses. You also helped implement the predictive scheduling ordinance. This is one of many things you've done for working families, in addition to being an affordable housing advocate recognized throughout the state. But last, I'd just like to leave you all with one thing that I think you fully understand, and that your commitment has been so incredible and so deep, and people only rain on your parade because they're jealous of your sun and tired of their shade. So thank you so much for your service.
Any other member of the public or staff?
It's a problem when you go last after all these great eloquent speakers. I felt it was really important to come and say a few words on behalf of John Bouders. I've worked in city government for 37 years. I've worked for the city of Palo Alto for 13 years. I've worked for the city of Belmont, East Palo Alto, Town of Fairfax, city of Sausalito, and Emeryville now, twice. There is no council member like you in the 37 years I've worked in city government. You are professional, you are engaged, and you are team-oriented. You're a triple threat. You have vision, you know how to listen, and you're result-driven. Staff appreciation, you heard from staff tonight. We had a staff meeting where we invited Councilmember Bouders to join us, to really appreciate all that you've done over the years working with staff, and we really wanted to spend the time, not two minutes, three minutes, but really spend the time connecting with you and sharing stories. Really, really meaningful. Staff appreciation is a two-way street. You have to earn that. Really, really meaningful. Staff appreciation is a two-way street. You have to earn that, and you have. And you heard it tonight. You make working fun. You have a lot of fun with you. You come in, you joke, you have a sense of humor, but you do know how to get stuff done. And when all the joking and fun times need to get serious, you help us get serious and focused. Most notable is you're genuine, you're passionate, and you really care. You served with distinction, kindness, and selflessness. You left your tire tracks, your paw tracks, all over Emeryville and beyond. On behalf of all the prior city managers that came before me and all the staff that stand besides me, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.[644.82][644.82](applause)
Yeah, hi. I just have to make a comment. When I left the city council in Emeryville, I became a videographer and started attending regional meetings that weren't being recorded. And one of those was the Alameda County Transportation Commission. I saw John in action. He was very effective, worked very well with the colleagues, and got a lot of things done. You know, he lost his first election because I ran for city council in that election just because I didn't know who he was. Who is this guy that shows up in the city and then starts to run for city council? I didn't know who he was. So I wasn't going to just let somebody come in here and decide they can be on the city council. So I guess I'm sorry for that, but that's the way it goes. Anyway, thank you for your service, and hopefully I can work with you on these regional issues and we can protect the city of Emeryville. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Hi, Mr. City Attorney.
Good evening, Mayor Welch, members of the city council. I just want to echo everyone's sentiments as well. I think a lot's been said already. I've worked with a lot of elected officials, all kinds of different personalities, but I appreciate working with John. He's challenging. He's visionary. And he stays within the legal parameters, which I really appreciate a lot. It's been great working with you. I think I echo everyone that serves as outside counsel and our assistant city attorney as well. It's been a pleasure working with you, and we wish you all the best on your next endeavor, which I'm sure is going to be fantastic.
Any other members of the public or staff? Members, I turn to you and offer you the opportunity to comment before we give the floor to Councilmember Bowders to address the public one last time. Vice Mayor Moore?
We've heard so much said. I definitely want to echo what's been said, but I think out of all of it, what stands out to me the most about you, John, and this has been my experience just watching you over the last eight-plus years, more than anything, I appreciate your relentless focus on getting things done. I think it's very common and all too easy to get caught up in the process of how we do things in cities. And I've seen you navigate that process with ease and never losing focus of what is actually important, what the people of the city care about, which is actually seeing the thing come to life, whether it's the quick build, Greenway improvements you did during the pandemic, that me and my two small boys were able to ride scooters and bikes without fear for cars, you know, during this really scary time when it was hard to get, you know, even be outside, or, you know, trying to separate from other people. Seeing what you've done with the Quiet Train Crossing Initiative, which, you know, I emailed the mayor the first day I moved into the city more than 15 years ago. I said, why are these trains blasting their horns? And she explained that there's a Quiet Train Initiative, and nothing happened for years, until you single-handedly pushed that through, got all of the signatures needed for regional money. Not a dime of Emeryville's money went into that, and that was remarkable. Those bus stops that people use and appreciate that came up overnight, those park toilets, the Portland Lou, the ones that are just kind of in the face of other cities that can't manage to get a toilet placed. I feel like with all of these, it just captures your relentless focus on getting things done, focus on the results. And I was thinking more about that, and I realized what drives you in this. And it's clear, it's a deep compassion for the people who are going to use these things, whose lives are going to benefit from that. And I think that is just a remarkable quality, and I think it's something that all elected officials should try to emulate. Thank you, John.
I have heard so much, John, about you right now that I did not know. I learned about you. The first time I had the contact with you was over the phone when I was running as a candidate. You bothered to spend three hours of your time until 1:00 PM explaining to me how to run a campaign. And I am very grateful for your time, and that showed me how dedicated you were in helping people. I really appreciate that, even though you told me you were not going to be endorsing me. You were endorsing only one person. And the next thing I heard was Fran Quittel called me and said, oh, John endorses you. And I told her, no, of course not. He doesn't. He told me he doesn't. And you had sent out an email, I think, to the general public. I thank you for your trust in me at that time for doing that. I appreciated my time on the council with you. I wish you the best of luck. I know that you will do well in whatever you do, and you will stay committed to public service. I look forward to seeing you in the community, and I hope you remain involved. Thank you so much for your public service. Very much appreciate it.
Talk about going last, Mr. City Manager. I wanted to read a letter from former Mayor Ally Medina that she sent in. She's not feeling well, but I wanted to read this. Having served with him for six years, I think it's fairly uncontroversial statement to assert that he is one of the most tireless elected officials to ever hit a small city. The man rarely sleeps, is powered by zero caffeine, and as far as I can tell, his energy is derived largely from the satisfaction of doing a good job for others' benefit. John was my transit twin with the motto, "Tell me what we need, and I'll get it funded." And he delivered. The beautiful bridge that spans the railroad, the plant upgrades, the San Pablo Corridor, quick build upgrades that improved Doyle Street, and many other corridors around town. He has fought for positions on larger bodies that would enable him to bring our city a disproportionate amount of funding for projects over the past year. The landscape of Emeryville is forever altered by his works, improved in such a way to encourage more people, as he would say, to get outside. His passions extended far beyond bike lanes. Immediately upon being elected, he drew his background to improve our tenants' rights ordinance. When COVID hit, he and I spent late nights, meeting deadlines, to get residents' rent relief the moment the stay-at-home order hit. I've woken up to many a 3:00 AM emails from this man. The way John was successful is not that he came in with political allies or experience. He was always just more willing to do the work, to serve on the committee, to read the report, to give detailed feedback. He found allies and support where others would find enemies and frustration by simply showing up and sharing a vision and the willingness to bring everyone forward. His success on these committees meant success for our city and for a cleaner air in the Bay Area, less lead in homes for small children, faster bus times across the Bay Bridge for commuters. I look forward to seeing the next chapter from him, and I'm grateful for his work as both a former colleague but on behalf of the city. There is also an additional...
We received many notes, and I'll read another one. This is from Nicolau De Luca, the Vice President of Townsend Public Affairs. "To my brosef, it's been an honor and a privilege to work with you over the years, whether it was getting state legislation passed into law, securing critical funding for the city, or advocating in Washington, DC. You have been a fearless leader for the city. I have learned a lot from you, and I am a better person because of you. More than anything, I am grateful for our friendship. Thank you."
And so for my comments, one of my favorite memories of John is actually, it's a photo. And I don't know where you are, but you were giving a presentation, and the title says, "You Can Have Nice Things." And that's John's motto about just how to design communities. So many of us, even if we've lived in Emeryville for a long time, or have lived here for a short time, we might have come for a community where it feels like people have to decide, do you have nice things, or do you have to deal with displacement? Or does it mean that not everyone gets to share in the nice things? But John has always led with the idea that you don't have to choose, that having nice things should always be the goal, and just the decision is just how do we get there? What is the best path forward? And he talks about it in a community development standpoint, but really, you can apply it to so many other things in your life. And he and I have some shared experiences. And so when you think about how you live your life, sometimes you don't always feel like you deserve the good things. So I just want to thank you for reminding me that you can always have the good things, and we all deserve to have the good things. And thank you for everything that you've done for me and this community. And I said I wasn't going to cry, but it's hard now at the end. So just thank you, and I love you. And I know you'll always be here to support the city and the community, no matter where you go, if you stay here, if you leave here. Thank you for breaking the mold when they made elected officials. You are a standard to live up to, and I don't think Emeryville or any of us will ever forget you. Just thank you so much. Okay. It is your turn.[1340.71][1340.71](applause)
As Charlie may recall, the day I became mayor in 2017, when I was handed the gavel from Scott Donahue, I said that I don't do speeches. The meeting is adjourned. And he came up to me afterwards. He says, "It's the best mayor's speech I've ever heard."[1363.83][1363.83](laughter) So I'm going to do two things. I want to read a poem, and then I just have very brief comments. This poem is written by Douglas Malik in 1922. It's a very well-known poem called "Good Timber." "The tree that never had to fight for sun and sky and air and light, but stood out in an open plain and always got its share of rain. Never became a forest king, but lived and died a scrubby thing. The man who never had to toil to gain and farm his patch of soil, who never had to win his share of sun and sky and light and air, never became a manly man, but lived and died as he began. Good timber does not grow with ease. The stronger wind, the stronger trees. The further sky, the greater length. The more the storm, the more the strength. By sun and cold, by rain and snow, in trees and men, good timbers grow. Where thickest lies the forest growth, we find the patriarchs of both. And they hold counsel with the stars, whose broken branches show the scars of many winds and much of strife, for this is the common law of life." I want to thank everybody who wrote or commented this evening for your generosity and your kindness in your words. I want to just say several important thank yous. I want to thank my family. I want to thank my family. I want to thank my partner, Erin. I want to thank everybody who's been a friend of mine, past or present, who's shown kindness to me, who's encouraged me, who's contributed to what I have tried to share. I want to thank my colleagues, past and present, Scott Donahue, Diane Martinez, Ally Medina, Christian Pats, and the current members of the city council. I want to thank you for your commitment in a shared manner to representing the people of this city. I want to thank the staff over the years. You are the little engine that can. This is the mightiest little city in the Bay, and it is mighty because of you. The work you do together, the teamwork that you model and exemplify, the way that you show up every day. Kindness is a good virtue, but action is a deed that people remember. And I'm just grateful that whether that's childcare for our youngest babies, whether that's planning a future home for a member of the community, whether that's getting a child safely to school, or a parent safely home from work, whether that's being the person who takes the call or the email when no one else will, whether that's giving sound advice even when it's not popular, whether that's being the person who burns 20 minutes of your day telling jokes with me inside City Hall, whether that's showing up for people who call for emergency response, all of you matter, and all of you are so integral and important to what you do, what we do here. And anything that has been said this evening about my contributions is only there because you are there. You have helped make all of those things possible. This city lives and breathes because of your work. And then lastly, I just want to thank the people of Emeryville, who trusted me for eight years to be a representative of yours. I hope I have done my best. I'm grateful for your kindness, and I wish all of you the very best. Thank you for your comments.
So, item six, public comment for the consent agenda. Are items not on the agenda? If any member of the public potentially has a comment on any of that, they can do so now for two minutes. Seeing and hearing none. Public comment is now closed. Item seven is the consent agenda. It is just one item, the resolution of the city council of the city of Emeryville declaring the results of the Emeryville Consolidated General Municipal Election held on Tuesday, November 5, 2024, as to the election of the three council members.
It would please you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve this item.
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. The rule, please.
Councilmember Bowders?
For the last time, aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion passes. See you later, friend.[1686.73][1686.73](door closing) All right. Now for the show. We're on to item eight, the ceremonial items. Item 8.1, the installation of elected officials, the administration of the oath of office to the three newly-elected city council members. Are we just doing it all together, one by one?
We're going to do it all together. Mayor Anne Matthew Solomon is going to come up and join you on the dais.
All right. Madam Clerk, do you want us to stand?
If you'd like to stand and raise your right hand, please. You have the oath in front of you. You'll just repeat back to me stating your name, or I say state your name. So, here we go. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Courtney Welch.
Do so solemnly swear or affirm...
Do so solemnly swear.
...that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter as a council member for the city of Emeryville.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter as a council member of the city of Emeryville.
Thank you, councilmembers. Congratulations.
All right. Congratulations, Member Carr. Member Solomon, I wanted to give you the floor just to make any comments if you felt the need to.
I will also keep my comments brief, but congratulations, Mayor Welch and Member Carr. And I just want to say thank you to my family and my friends who are here today and who are watching online, everyone who's supported me throughout this process. And I look forward to working with the rest of the council to fill what are very big shoes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Member Solomon. Member Carr, did you have any comments?
I thank the city of Emeryville for their trust and confidence in me, in reelecting me. Grateful to serve another term on the council, and welcome to our new council member. And congratulations to Mayor Welch for reelection.
Just want to echo my gratitude. I will save a couple more comments for item 8.2. The appointment of mayor and vice mayor of the city of Emeryville for one-year terms expiring December 2025. I just want to thank, one, the city of Emeryville, the residents for reelecting me to a full four-year term. This past year, being able to serve as mayor has been one of the great honors of my life. And there's obviously been a lot of shifts when it comes to mayors here in the Bay Area. And it is not lost upon me that I am in a very unique position to really feel that I have what I have described as a collaborative leadership opportunity with my colleagues, with staff, with the community. I have never once, even just day one on the council, have ever felt alone in this journey. I've never felt as if there was not anyone for me to go to. I've never felt unsupported. I've never felt unheard or unlistened to. And frankly put, not all mayors get to feel like that. And so I recognize the unique opportunity that it is to just be in service of this community, not just as an elected official, but as a mayor and as a woman, and especially as a Black woman. Many Black women go to work every day and feel taken advantage of. They feel unheard or disposed of. And I can definitively say I never felt that way here. I have felt seen. I have felt uplifted. I have felt supported. And that is because of my colleagues and my staff and my fellow community members. And so I just want to thank you all, as I'm getting emotional again. Thank you all for this just beautiful and amazing experience. And I just look forward to pushing forward and serving Emeryville moving forward for another four years. One of my biggest supporters has been my vice mayor, David Mora, who is one of the brightest, most astute and analytical, forth-thinking leaders I have ever had the privilege of working with. And Member Carr, who I call my member of the Women's Caucus here on the city council, who, very much in a similar vein as me, came in in the middle of someone else's term and needed to hop right in. You know, we swore you in that. We voted you in, and you got sworn in that moment. It's like, "All right, girl, go on, sit down, and let's get to voting." And you just jumped right in and just grabbed, grabbed the bull by the horn, by the horns. And both of you are just amazing leaders. You're collaborators. You want the absolute best for Emeryville. And with that being said, it is my great honor to nominate Vice Mayor David Mora to serve as mayor, and Councilmember Carr to serve as vice mayor for terms ending December 2025. And at this time, I will entertain any other nominations or a second on that nomination.
I'm happy to second.
Do we have any additional comments on the nomination?
I just wanted to add one comment. Mayor Welch, I do want to thank you for your leadership and steady hand over this last year. And what a challenging year it's been. We lost a very capable city manager. We lost our most experienced council member. The city's financial situation is challenging, to say the least. And we've made a lot of progress on those issues and others under your leadership. And I want to thank you for your kind words. And if this council wishes it, I would be honored to step into the role of mayor to continue to serve the city.
Member Solomon, did you have a comment? Okay. Any other comments? Well, we've got a nomination that's been second. And so, Madam Clerk, roll, please.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Abstain.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
You know I did that wrong. You're still the mayor. I'm so sorry.
It's fine. Get used to it.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, congratulations. Well, we're not changing seats tonight, but I'm going to hand this over to you because you thought your first official duty as mayor, sir.
This is the administration of the, so item 8.3, the administration of the oath to the mayor and vice mayor. Madam Clerk? Do we read them separately or together?
I think we should probably do them separately. Is that all right if I do the vice mayors first?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor Carr? I state your name.
I submit Carr.
Do so solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Do so solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter as vice mayor for the city of Emeryville.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter as vice mayor for the city of Emeryville.
Thank you. Congratulations. Mayor Mora, would you please stand and raise your hand?
I state your name.
I, David Mora.
Do so solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Do so solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I bear, that I bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter as mayor for the city of Emeryville.
And that I will well faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter as mayor for the city of Emeryville.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations.
There are no further items. This meeting is adjourned.
It's all right.
Recording stopped.